I will call to order the meeting of the Common Council for Monday, May 24th, 2021, at 7:03 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next we'll have the role.
Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Ryan.
Here.
Alder Person Hoax.
President.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
All right, next we'll move on to item four, which is public comments. Mr. Sayer, do we have any registered speakers?
I have one speaker tonight, Lauren Cohen. I will promote her into the meeting.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Lauren Cohen, and I'm a resident of Verona, and I'm speaking on behalf of the local Moms Demand Action for Nonsense in America. We're the local chapter, the Mount Harb and Verona Chapter. And today I'm following up on an email asking the Common Council to declare June 4th Wear Orange Day in honor of gun violence survivors. June 4th is National Gun Violence Awareness Day and the start of Wear Orange Weekend. We'll be wearing orange to honor those taken and the lives forever changed by gun violence and to renew our commitment to ending gun violence in America. Our group will raise local awareness by decorating the bike path, putting up signs and talking messages on the sidewalks. Governor Evers has signed the proclamation for Wisconsin, and Mount Harb has also signed a proclamation, and we hope the signed proclamation from you will enhance awareness here in Verona. And you may ask, how does this affect Verona? Gun violence affects all of us. Most people think of gun violence as mass shootings or gang violence, but in Wisconsin, 70% of gun violence is suicide. There's also an economic toll to gun violence in Wisconsin. It costs taxpayers, it costs Wisconsin $3.9 billion per year, of which $139 million is paid by Wisconsin taxpayers. The proclamation we sent to the Common Council contains statistics, polled from the CDC, CDC data. I've shared the links with the mayor at his request. While the Common Council can edit the proclamation, we're asking that you consider including the statistics to educate our community about this critically important issue. Again, thank you for the time to speak this evening and also for your service to Verona. And I can answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
There we go. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Other speakers, Mr. Sayer.
No, that is it. I think we're having some audio issues right now as well, so bear with us.
Gotcha. Is it kind of like through YouTube, or is it?
I don't know. I'm working texting with Andy, so I might, you can keep going. I'm gonna jump out here and talk to Andy, so.
Okay. With that, we will move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes from the May 10th, 2021 Common Council meeting. Corrections or motions to approve?
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Alder Ricky, I believe. Last chance for corrections. Seeing no hands. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the May 10th, 2021 Common Council meeting, say aye.
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 opposed, no?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Next we'll move on to Mayor's business. I have three quick things. Just gonna find real quick. First off, I am going to read this proclamation, proclaiming the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Verona to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, and whereas Wisconsin has 621 gun deaths every year, 70% of those gun deaths are by suicide. In Wisconsin, the gun suicide rate in the most rural counties is two times higher than in most urban counties. Whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including in Verona, Wisconsin, are working to end the census violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and increase in city gun violence. Let's see. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15, and on June 4th, 2021, to recognize the 24th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize national gun violence awareness and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves. So other hunters went out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 4th, the first Friday in June 2021, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 4th, 2021, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Luke Diaz of the city of Verona, declare the first Friday in June, June 4th, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. And then I will sign and date this after the meeting. Moving on to the next item, there is a community steering committee for a dementia-friendly community in Verona. Previously, Alder Charlotte Journey was the city appointee to that seat. However, she did not run for reelection, so that seat is currently empty. Typically, it's been somebody on the senior services committee. But it could be any alder who has an interest in it. But the chairperson, Steve Rudolph, asked me to send an alder over. And I'm wondering if we have any volunteers. It meets about once every two months for about an hour. Alder Posey.
I would be interested. This is something that is hit close to home for me. And so seeing that on the agenda, I would be interested in serving.
Excellent. Any other alders interested? Okay. We'll get that taken care of. And then the third item, which I didn't have listed. But I just want to say that if you ever get an email purporting to be from me asking you to buy gift cards, asking you to send money, it's not really from me. I will never ask you to buy gift cards. I will never ask you for money. We have a new anti-spam system at the city that blocks most of that stuff. But you know, every once in a while, I'll get a text from someone who's like, you didn't really, you don't really want me to buy gift certificates. I'm like, no, it's a scam. Please delete it. I will tell IT. But I'm just making that announcement now that it is a scammer. And like I said, hopefully, the system will continue to get better and we won't get all those obnoxious emails. But that is all I had under Mayor's business. We'll move on to item seven, which is announcements. Does anyone from the council have any announcements? Alder Cole.
So as you received an email from me, and I'm just going to announce it publicly, that I am resigning from council. My last meeting as alder will be the last meeting in June. So I've got three more meetings, including this one. I just wanted to say it's really been an honor and a pleasure and a privilege to serve with everybody on City Council. I've really enjoyed my time as an alder person and getting to know all the staff and everybody in the city and just see what it takes to make a city function and how hard everybody works. It's been a real honor, and I will miss this position. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for your service, and I imagine people have more stuff to say at your last meeting. Other announcements from the council? Alder Ricky.
I just wanted to put a plug in for the Verona Area High School Musical Theater production, which is usually in the fall, but they've still worked on a virtual production that's going to begin Thursday and go through Saturday. There will be four shows, and it features the new high school building, which not everybody has had a chance to be in. So that's another reason people might want to watch this one-hour musical production virtually. You can get tickets on the Verona Area High School website, and the tickets are free. And you just need to register so that you can be sent the link to watch the show.
Sounds great. Other announcements from the council? All right, we'll move on to item eight, which is administrator's report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. No mo May ends on May 31st, so if you have not been cutting your yard, you'll need to cut that as of June 1st. We'll have open book starting also on June 1st. That's from 3:00 to 5:00. And appointments are available by phone or by Zoom. And then we'll have board review on June 16th at 6:00 PM. That's a meeting that's going to be held on Zoom that was set a few months ago, kind of before all the recent, you know, Dane County lifting of the order. So June 16th, 6:00 PM on Zoom, and then once again, that's a minimum of two hours long. So planned for two hours that night. We are still working on our downtown plantings. We do those yearly. We also have under hanging baskets along East Verona Avenue, so if you see work happening downtown, it is ready with plantings that we've been doing the last couple of years. Those landscaping enhancements are funded with room tax dollars. The Recreation Department this year has seen a significant increase in registrations in their summer programs. The numbers are up for almost every program that's offered, and we have waiting lists on many of those programs as well. We think a lot of that is attributed to actually COVID and people kind of wanting to get back out or having your kids get back out and do things. And then finally, we're actively recruiting right now for a public works maintenance worker position, a public streets superintendent, and then also a senior center case manager position. So if you know any good candidates, we're always looking for applicants. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sayer? Seeing none, we'll move on to the engineer's report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. For the Eastside Interceptor, Ice Age Trail is detoured the South Main Street to Military Ridge State Trail. The Lincoln Street Bridge and path between the Lincoln Street cul-de-sac and Hillcrest Drive is open in a temporary condition. Short closures will be needed again in the next couple of months for the local sewer connection north of Badger Mill Creek and for path paving. Once we know those closure schedules, we'll add those to the report. For the pipe installation crews are continuing to install gravity sewer and MMSC Forest Main east of the Lincoln Street Path, working east toward the Arborby Day Place area end of the project. Dewatering has been set up to the Lincoln Street Channel area. Materials are still being staged along the entire project from South Main Street to the end of the project just east of Arborby Day Place. Restoration crews are continuing seed restoration from Bruce Street to the Badger Mill Creek Double Creek Crossing area, and they've completed the Melody Circle restoration. There is a figure included in the report that shows the grading and seed restoration from Bruce Street to South Main Street. Again, the Dane County work is scheduled to take place this summer, and it may start as early as mid-June. In terms of the neighborhood progress meetings, the fifth neighborhood progress meeting was held on May 19th, and the next one is scheduled for June 16th. There's a Zoom link for the meeting on the project website. For the Lincoln Street Stormwater Management Facility, the primary activity will continue to be excavation. About 40% of the excavation has been completed. We showed a figure, an aerial figure of that excavation in the report. The contractor is projecting excavation to continue through May and into the first week of June, depending on weather. For the Badger Mill Creek Restoration Design, the current general permit application, the permits have been submitted. The general permit application is ready to submit at the end of May. If the expedited permit that was previously discussed at a previous meeting is not available. So the DNR is coming up with an expedited permit. The design consultant has reached out and confirmed with the DNR that the construction target dates of July and August are not impacted by the permitting schedule. For the County Highway, M County Highway PB Intersection Design, Jason Wistat Project was delayed due to a scope review on their end, which will add scope to this project. So we're currently coordinating work that overlaps with the would-be Wistat Project with the signals and roadway engineers from Wistat. 60% plans were submitted to the city on 5/13. For the Asphaltic Street Rehabilitation Project, all concrete work has been completed. Billing of the pavement was performed on May 19th, and paving is scheduled for this week. A little update on that, the paving on Prairie Heights Drive is complete, and the paving on Locust Drive is in progress, and flaggers are managing traffic. For the stormwater basin treatments, the alum treatment occurred on May 19th. The contractor was able to get all three basins complete in one day. Those were, again, Silent Street, the Meister Edition West, and the Verona Tech Park ponds. Water samples were collected before and after the treatment, and there will be three rounds of water samples collected throughout the course of this year to monitor the effectiveness of the treatment. So with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions on the engineer's report? Seeing no questions. We will move on to item 10, which is committee reports. First up, we have 10A, which is Finance Committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion regarding a discussion and possible action regarding acceptance of the city 2020 financial statements presentation by Baker Tilly. And I believe we will have a presenter, correct, Adam?
We do. I have three people which I can promote into the meeting. I'll put Bosby in, John, and Jody.
Looks like we're slowly joining in. Where's everyone? Thank you. Are we set to go, or did we are? Okay. Well, thank you very much for having all of us. We certainly appreciate it. Nice to see all of you, as we do once again another Zoom meeting. My name is John Rader. I'm a director of Baker Tilly. I'm in charge of the governmental funds portion of the audit. Along with me, you can see Vasvi Joshi. Vasvi also works on the governmental fund side, and Jody Dobson, who is a partner in the Energy Utility Group, and she's going to talk about the utility results. So those three of us are going to share the content as we go through this. So if you do have questions, just like in the past, don't hesitate and stop and ask us whatever you're curious about. Or you can wait to the end. We really have no preference. So we issued two different documents as part of the audit. One are your full financial statements, and we're not going to walk through those tonight. We tend to lose people and jump back and forth between pages. So we have some graphs and highlights that we have at the end of the document that we do want to walk through. So I'm going to start with that before I turn it over to Vasvi and then Jody to actually walk through the numbers. And is there a way I can share my screen, or you can pull up the reporting and insights document from the audit?
You should be able to share the screen with the share screen button in the middle.
Oh, I see. Wonderful. Okay. Everybody see that? Looks like it. Great. Okay, so here's the document I was talking about. It's similar to what we issued last year, but completely refreshed and obviously relevant to the 2020 audit. I'm just going to hit on a few pages here before we talk about the numbers. Not as many as I brought you through last year, but this page five, this gets at what our responsibilities are for the audit. And there's several different areas, of course, evaluating internal controls and such. But this last one is really one of the main reasons you hire an external CPA firm, and that's because we issue in the very front of your financial statements an audit opinion. And it's two or three pages, but it's required by the granting agencies, by the holders of your debt, banks, others, that you get this level of assurance on your financial statements. I think the takeaway from here is that we've issued what we call an unmodified opinion. It's really a clean opinion, meaning that it's free from material misstatement, as it's noted here, and that your financials are prepared according to the county rules or GAAP. Okay. A lot of different rules these days. I'll touch on them in a second here, but that's not an easy thing to achieve governmental reporting anymore. All right, going to page nine. At the bottom here are kind of the high-level areas that we look at as part of the audit. And some of these are fund-specific, such as capital for utility plant. Those are kind of drilled down to, but others such as cash and payroll and areas we audit across funds. But these are the areas that we really focus on between our two different teams that work together to produce that one set of financial statements. The other areas, you know, such as TIFs and things like that, kind of cross into all these different segments of the audit. Now pages 10 through 12, get at the other items, the matters that really I think committees and councils generally are more interested in. Did you have any issues? And these are called internal control matters, and there's nothing new in here this year. Actually, there's a step forward in several different areas. This first one is really, that starts in about the middle of the page, the financial statement close process is there, just like it is for almost all of our audits that we do for governments. The fact that we prepare the city's financial statements is not an ideal situation exactly. But most governments, just like Verona, don't have the internal resources to prepare their own financial statements. So the auditing rules set by the AICPA that we follow say, well, if that's the case, you usually have to report what's either a material weakness or a significant deficiency. So we are reporting a significant deficiency for the city, which is the lesser of those two extremes, even though it sounds a little bit worse. The one thing, the one thing I do want to point out, though, is we didn't have any material entries for the city, which is really commendable, and that's actually quite rare. We usually, you know, I usually consider 10 or fewer audit entries to be really exceptional. We didn't have any for Verona, so that's not really important for this report and for the audit. It's even more important for you as users of those financial figures throughout the year and especially at budget time to know that you can rely upon them. All right, on the next page, this is a comment, and we kind of get into the other comments. And there's just really one, and this one has been here for many years. The city with numerous active TIFs, the state statutes say that you have to have three different TIF audits during the life of a TIF. And years ago, the city fell behind on those. And we've been slowly catching up, and this last summer-fall finally caught up on all these. So it's, the city is in full compliance. We did two at the same time of TIF number six. So it's nice to see that comment get resolved, and that will go away for next year. So, and for that one, I know that was not easy. You had to go way back into some of the archives to find some of the items that we were asking for. The bottom half of this page is really just an informational point. It talks about these reflection points. Again, this is in most of our reports, and it's the nature of government. You'd have to serve the citizens. We realize that, you realize that even more. But there are certain risks associated with that. So again, informational, and this really just kind of bullet points some considerations, many of which the city is already doing. Pages 13 through 16, won't run through all these either. Just a couple of things, you know, these are, like I said, required communications. You'll find these in all audit reports, government and non-government. And just kind of things that come to point that we are required to communicate to you, to the council. The first one is really focused on new accounting policies. And during fiscal 2020, the city did not have to implement any new accounting rules, which is kind of rare. But GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standboard that sets the rules, gave everyone a break this year because of COVID-19, realizing we all, governments and auditors too, had enough to deal with as far as challenges. So no new changes this year, no changes this year. The second item is accounting estimates. The other two are the most common ones, depreciation. So we take a look at used lies, being utilized and such, and also with the pension liabilities or this year in assets, some of the underlying assumptions for that. The rest of these are just things that are fairly rare, and if they were issues, we were pointing out to you like difficulties during the audit of disagreements. Nothing of that nature. Here's the different accounting rules on page 18 that are around the bend for the city. The big one to pay attention to, I know I mentioned this last year too, is 87 for leases. That is going to put some additional items on your balance sheet most likely, as well as some additional footnote disclosures. The old definition of capital versus operating is going away. So we have been talking about this with Adam and Brian for the last couple of years and providing training and webinars and such, and we'll continue to do that as it approaches quickly here. And then these others, we'll see how they apply or don't apply to the city going forward. All right, and then 21 through 24, these are just informational points. If you're interested in these kind of things, I encourage you to take a look. These hyperlinks work in the PDF format for some additional information. They don't really, they're not so relevant to the audit as they are to really governmental operations. Okay, with that, I'm going to be quiet and I'll turn it over to Vasvi to talk about the numbers, which is probably what you're more interested in.
Thanks, John. Good evening, everyone. So we put together some summarized graphical information related to the city's general fund, where that's where a lot of activity happens. So that's what you are seeing in front of you. In the top portion, the graph shows the general fund's fund balance comparison between last year and this year. So the green lines, the green bars are 2020, and the black one is prior year. So as you can see, the top line, you know, fund balance has gone up slightly about $200,000 compared to last year. And then the couple of bottom graphs or bars are just categories of fund balances. That's defined by governmental accounting standards. So accounting standards tell us this is how, you know, fund balance should be presented. So it's the bottom, the most bottom one is non-spendable, which is the most restrictive. And that's the fund balance, which is just not in spendable form because it's just tied up in either like pre-pays or inventories or some long-term assets. So as you can see, pretty much, you know, just a little bit increase compared to last year. And that's just because of the timing of, you know, when the pre-pays happen. So that's the most restrictive. And then the next couple of categories are restricted and committed, and the city didn't really have any fund balance within those categories. And the next one above that is assigned fund balance, which is what the city decides to just set aside for specific purposes, whatever the city chooses them to be. So really about half of the assigned fund balance was for the 2021 budget, so subsequent year budget. And then remaining half was for paying sick leave liabilities across all the various departments. So that's what, it went down slightly compared to last year. So but overall, you know, the fund balance went up. And as you can see, the middle section shows how it compared to budget. So the city expected to actually use about half a million of fund balance, but ended up being into positive of 200 grand, so like a swing of almost 750,000. And as you can see, you know, revenues were down a little bit compared to final budget, and that was mostly because of room taxes, you know, the city budgeted for room tax revenue. But because of COVID, you know, you didn't receive as much as you expected. but because of COVID, you know, you didn't receive as much as you expected. And expenditures were really down in almost all of the departments. You know, there were savings in public safety, public works, general government. So all departments had savings and expenditures, and that's what the 936,000 of savings are. So in total, you ended up being positive compared to your budget by like almost 750,000. And if you want to look at more detail of how all the departments are and all the revenue categories, there is a detailed schedule included within the audited financial statements. It's on pages 54 through 56 of the other financial report.
I will add that this is, this is what we have seen at a lot of governments in Wisconsin this year. Very similar story where expenditures were restrained. The roster recovery funding came in, so you saw either breakeven or a small surplus in the general fund at the end of the year. Just kind of praising for it, position themselves well to handle it.
Is there any other questions from the council? Are you guys, is there still one more?
Yep, so there is a couple more. So there's one more slide for general funds, fund balance again, and this is comparison to the city's fund balance policy. The city policy is to have the general funds fund balance between 15 to 25% of expenditures. And as you can see, the green line is way above that fund balance policy. And the blue dots are median ranges for other clients that we audit with similar population range as City of Verona. So in a lot of time, we get questions like, okay, this is great compared to our policy, but how did we do compared to other communities within Wisconsin that's similar size? As you can see, the city is doing even a little bit better than other communities. And, you know, the graph is consistent, so not huge dips or peaks, you know, so from year to year. So next couple of graphs are about cities' debt, general obligation debt. And again, this compares to the Wisconsin's debt limit, which is 5% of the city's equalized value. So the debt limit is the black dotted line, and the city's actual debt is the green line. So the black line is how much was allowable debt, and green is where the city ended up being, which was about at 30%. And the city's debt policy is even more restrictive, you know, 3.75%. So as you can see, it's very, very well within that limit and consistently, and even going down over a period of time. And the middle portion shows how the debt is broken out between the city and the utilities, and how much is general obligation versus revenue. And revenue debt is essentially paid using customer revenues. So it's not, you know, you don't need to levy for it. And some of the general obligation debt is for TID purposes. So, you know, eventually TID increments will pay for that debt too. In addition to general obligation debt and revenue, there is also long-term liabilities for compensated absences, sick and vacation. So that was about total 1.4 million between the city and the utilities. And as we saw in the previous ones, some of it is already, you already have fund balance set aside to pay for some of it. So it's not gonna hit you, you know, all at once. And the very bottom portion shows there is a link to the Wisconsin Policy Forum. So again, if you want to look at any communities, how their debt is and where do they stand, like per capita comparison or compared to the, you know, legal debt margin within Wisconsin, you can just click on this link and it will take you to a page. You select debt there, and then you can filter and look at data for any communities within Wisconsin. So very neat data there. So one more graphical information about cities' debt. So this is debt service expenditures compared to the non-capital expenditures for the city. And as you can see, there was just a slight peak in 2017. That must have been a heavy year for, or maybe the city had a current refunding that year. But then after that, it's pretty much about at like 30 to 30% of non-capital expenditures, which is slightly higher than other communities. As you can see, the black dots are on other cities that we audit a similar size. But again, as I mentioned, you know, city has a lot of development going on, and a lot of it is TIF-related. So eventually, it's gonna get paid through TIF increments. So we're not, you know, too concerned about that. Yeah, and I think the next couple of graphs are just related to utility information. So if you have any questions related to debt or fund balance, you can take them now, or I'll head it over to Jody, talk about the utility information.
All right, thank you, Vasvi. So then, as mentioned here, the next couple of graphs are on the utility operations, and we look at very similar ratios. So we'll start with the water utility. As regulated by the state, we do look at the rate of return, because that's how they measure the operating results of the utility. And we can see from 2019 to 2020, there was a marked improvement here, up to a 4.6% rate of return, or return earned on your investment in capital assets in 2020. And one of the largest drivers for that is that you had new water rates that were implemented during the fourth quarter of 2019. So you got the full impact of those in 2020. And that's also why we see the increase on the green bar for the revenues of the graph there at the top of the page, while the operating expenses stayed, I'll say relatively flat from 2019 to 2020. And then three of the other benchmarks that we like to look at for utility operations as they are operating on a full accrual basis. The first is the unrestricted cash reserves. The Government Finance Officers Association would recommend a minimum of three months operations in your cash reserves. I know rating agencies prefer closer to six or 12 months worth of cash reserves. So what we can see here is that the water utility has a very strong cash reserve balance, and it's been very stable over the last five years. We can combine with that the next two numbers, looking at the debt coverage or the ability to pay your debt service on those revenue bonds that Vasvi mentioned, where the pledge is the utility revenues and not your taxing authority. So they require that you have the ability to pay your debt service 1.25 times after operating costs. And you're well above that for 2020. And in part, that is because as we look at that bar graph, the water utility only has about 6% of its net investment in capital assets is financed through outstanding debt. Most of the capital assets are financed through equity. So combining that, that low debt profile with the cash reserves really gives you flexibility. If you needed to build a significant capital project, you've got the ability to borrow. For smaller routine projects, you've got cash on hand, so you've got a lot of options. So then, as we move to the sewer utility on the next page, sewer rates are reviewed annually and were adjusted at the beginning of 2020. But we see here that the results still ended with revenues and expenses being very close to the same amount. And in part, that is because your largest expense in the sewer utility is the treatment charges from MMSD, and they do revise their rates on an annual basis. So I know that's part of the process is to review and try to recapture their changes in cost through your rates as well. But then looking again at the unrestricted reserves, right about a year's worth of operations on hand, so very strong and stable reserves there over the last three years or four of the last five years. And while the bar graph there at the bottom is a little out of skew on the colors, again, very low debt profile and only 14% of the capital being financed through outstanding debt. So again, have that flexibility. And then finally, looking at the stormwater utility, your youngest utility. Here we do see that the operating expenses have consistently outpaced the operating revenues, but a large part of that is driven by the non-cash depreciation expense, which is why the unrestricted reserves in the middle of the page remain so so stable and strong over the last five years, even though the revenues are slightly below the expenses. And the stormwater, again, has very little, only 2% of the capital financed through debt. So having a lot of those projects come through TIF programs, developers, et cetera, the capital improvements, has allowed the utility to continue to operate without having to increase the rates as frequently. The last time the stormwater rates was changed was in 2018. I think that's kind of all of our highlights. Are there any questions on any of the information or the reports for any of the three of us?
Any questions on the finance report from Baker Tilly? Seeing none?
No.
Oh wait, was there a question? Oh, sorry, Alder Cronin.
I just wondered if you could speak to the city's Moody's rating, please?
Brian shared that with us recently. It's not something that we really get involved with, involved with. You know, we understand some of the factors that go into it. But is there something specifically that you want us to comment on or?
Just what we are in terms of the standing for that rating.
Yeah. I know that, you know, in the past, that there's been concerns about the level of debt, but the fund balance levels and the utility results, as Jody just ran through, we don't have any concerns from an audit standpoint for that in that regard. But it's not something we audit or get real involved with, or even disclose in the financials, but we are aware of it as part of the audit, and Brian sent that over to us not too long ago.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks, thanks for having us too. We appreciate not only being here tonight, but being your auditors and all that Brian and his team does in preparing for it, especially under this situation. It was, it provides an additional challenge for the audit, and he does an amazingly good job. So we do appreciate that.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate you guys. All right, with that, I believe we have to move on to number two, which is discussion and possible reaction, the payment of-
Point of clarification, does the council need to accept the 2020-
Yes, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I believe I already have a motion. I think we're gonna need a second.
Was there a motion? I'm sorry if I missed it.
I think I did. I can do it again.
Yeah, I mean, maybe just to be saving it.
All right, so with that, I'll make a motion to the council regarding the acceptance of the city 2020 financial statements presentation by Baker Tilly.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is that kind of Alder Touche? Motion before the body? Questions or comments on the motion to accept the city's 2020 financial statements presented by Baker Tilly? Seeing no hands? All those in favor of accepting the city 2020 financial statements presented by Baker Tilly signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that has been accepted. I'll move on to the next item, Alder Kemp.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the payment of the bills in the amount of $558,969.58.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin, I believe, Alder Kemp?
Yes, again, for the sake of discussion, we have a payment of $132,088 to the Fitch Verona EMS. That's the City of Verona's portion for the new ambulance. A payment of $109,638 for Madison Metro Sewage District, that's a connection and other fees. Most of this is reimbursed by our developers. And then we have a payment of $53,998 to pain and dolan for asphalt rehab projects.
You have heard the explanation? Questions or comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from finance?
Nothing further, thank you, sir.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10B, which is public safety, Alder Ricky.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special event permit application from Leanne Butts from the fifth quarter for special events to be held on July 10th and July 17th, 2021.
Motion by Alder Ricky? Is there a second by Alder Touche? Alder Ricky?
The fifth quarter is holding an event on July 10th from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and on July 17th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Similar to previous years, the applicant would utilize the parking lot located on the east side of the building. Staff has no concerns with the request as the fifth quarter has operated similar events in the past without any issues.
You've heard the explanation? Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of approving the special events permit application from Leanne Butts from the fifth quarter for special events to be held on July 10th, 2021, and July 17th, 2021? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from public safety?
No, that is out.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 10C, which is Public Sewer, or Public Works Sewer and Water Committee, Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm making a motion to approve change order number one for project ID 2021-101, Verona Asphalt Street Rehabilitation Project.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, Alder Touche?
Change order number one is for the asphaltic rehab project is to expand the work zone utilizing favorable, excuse me, favorable contract prices. This change order adds milling off and placement of two inches of asphalt pavement section in Half Mile Road and the associated concrete work. And it's also rectifying as-built quantities to date. Additional failing concrete was discovered during construction and was replaced on Locust Drive and Prairie Heights Drive. All concrete work is complete to date. This change order is for $51,537.50, bringing the total value to $233,710. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the motion to approve the change order? Seeing no hands? All those in favor of change order number one for project ID 2021-101, Verona Asphalt Street Rehabilitation Project signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from Public Works?
Nothing.
Cool, we will move on to item 11, which is new business. First up, we have 11A, which is a discussion and possible action regarding a lease agreement with Verizon for the water tower located at 408 West Verona Avenue, Mr. Sayer.
Thank you, staff is a work in Verizon on a lease agreement for the rental of the water tower space located at 408 West Verona Avenue. The city has an existing lease with Verizon on this tower that will expire in October of 2021. City staff has negotiated a new lease with Verizon. Some of the highlights of the new lease include it's a five-year term. There's a renewal provision in there that allows for four additional successive five-year terms, unless the tenant provides the landlord with written notice. And the base monthly rent would be $2,591.64 with an annual 3% escalation on that. Any action tonight shall be contingent upon legal review of the lease agreement.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions on a potential lease agreement with Verizon? Alder Cronin?
I will make a motion to approve the lease agreement with Verizon for the water tower located at 408 West Verona Avenue.
Would that be contingent on staff review of the legal agreement?
Yes.
Excellent, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Alder Ryan, I believe, oh, sorry, Mr. Sayer.
Just to clarify, that's legal review of the agreement, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, we're good. Motion before the body? Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of approving the lease agreement with Verizon for the water tower located at 408 West Verona Avenue, contingent upon legal review of the agreement signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Next, we'll move on to 11B, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the process for filling District Two, the District Two Council vacancy. Mr. Sayer?
Thank you, so I think we-
I think we've done this, it seems like almost every year lately, but, um, so we have, we have a process that we've used previously. Um, and I think what, what I'm looking for here tonight is direction on how to proceed with this. So, uh, how we've done this previously is we give a, a certain time period where people have to submit a kind of brief resume. And then the answer is to nine questions, which I can, I can read off to you, but it's the same questions that we've used during the last two or three vacancy processes, which kind of relate to why you're interested, why you're qualified, et cetera. Uh, so I guess from, from my standpoint, I, let's get looking for the direction on this. Ideally, we could possibly get this posted either on Tuesday or Wednesday of this week. Um, I think ideally, um, we would take these applications until Wednesday, June 23rd. And then ultimately on the June 28th council meeting, um, each candidate who has submitted an application and have the opportunity to address the council for three minutes. And then, uh, either at that meeting in the 28th or on July 12th, uh, that's when that nomination process and you could potentially fill that seat at that meeting. Um, so, um, I think ideally, you know, you, you probably fill that seat the first thing you do on July 12th, or you do at the end of the meeting on June 28th. But, um, ideally is it trying to get a smooth transition here just from a, a kind of keeping people, especially in the summer season, we're trying to make sure we have a core here. So, uh, that's the process I would kind of recommend here tonight is authorize staff to kind of utilize the same process that we've done before. Take these applications till June 23rd, interview on the 28th, and then whether it's the 28th or 12th, at one of those meetings, you, you'd vote on, you know, appointing someone.
Makes sense to me, but, uh, thoughts from the council?
Well, I can say that, you know, we're getting to be pretty good at this. So I, I would just say we probably need to do the same process that we, that we had with Alder Ryan. Um, and I think we should probably try and get it done as quickly as possible. So there is a smooth transition. So I, I would just kind of just say we probably run the same process that we had previously. But, um, of course, if anyone else has any opinions, I'd be more than happy to hear them.
Uh, other thoughts from the council? Uh, Alder Posey?
I'll just add the same. I feel like the process has worked pretty well thus far, um, having gone through originally myself. Um, from that side, it also allows a good thought provoking side for the candidates as well.
Uh, other thoughts? Uh, seeing no other discussion, I think what I'm hearing is to proceed as we have in the past.
Okay. Well, we'll proceed as we did in the past. I think I'll, I'll work with the just staff and the city attorney, just making sure we get the dates kind of how we want them to. I think potentially we'll try to target that June 28th meeting. Um, I know it's Katie's last meeting, but maybe it's the last time on the agenda potentially of trying to get action in place to recommend somebody, then we could swear the person in on the July 12th meeting. Um, so they'd be ready for that meeting. So we'll, I'll coordinate internally here. So as long as there's a little bit of flexibility on kind of how that happens. But we'll definitely get it out and plan on having, uh, this on the June 28th agenda to keep it moving.
Great. Hope we get a bunch of applicants. Um, moving on to 11C, uh, discussion possible action regarding resuming in-person or hybrid city meetings. Uh, Mr. Sayer?
I can, I can start. Uh, so on, on June 2nd, all Dane County Public Health orders will be lifted. With the lifting of the orders, staff is requesting direction from the council on how to proceed with all city meetings. Staff has completed, has completed the installation of the, the new equipment in the council chambers. Uh, that could allow for future hybrid meetings. Prior to starting hybrid meetings, guidelines and procedures will need to be created. Um, I know Brian Klymeyer, the city attorney is here tonight. If we have any type of legal questions regarding kind of the meetings and processes, Brian will assist with that. Um, I think the, the kind of the goal here tonight though is with this order being lifted, you know, we still have, we have a plan commission meeting that we've already set kind of as on Zoom for June 7th. We have the border review meeting on June 16th, I believe, that we set months ago for, for Zoom. But I think as we kind of target here, the, you know, June 14th council meeting and committee meetings, um, kind of looking for, for, for direction here on it just, you know, how, how you'd like to proceed. Obviously, the lifting of this order, I think from a staff level perspective, you know, in essence, you're, you're kind of back to where we were pre-COVID, in essence, with the lifting of this order. There's still recommendations in that order, but uh, there aren't any restrictions in place anymore as of June 2nd. So, um, like I said, looking for direction is how you'd like us proceed kind of moving forward here. So staff can start planning accordingly.
Alder Touche.
Thank you. Uh, I'm inclined to go back to pre-COVID meetings. So I'll go back in person. I think it's appropriate for us to be here and a little bit more conducive for us to have, uh, more interesting meetings.
Uh, other thoughts from the council? Uh, Alder Kemp?
I, I would agree at this point. I think, um, I'd be inclined to do that as well. I'm a bit concerned about some of us being gone and like the, uh, the diff, you know, how the, the technology is great, but it's not, you know, a hundred percent all of the time. So I'd, I'd be inclined to go back with the option that if a, a, a member needed to be away and needed to log in, then they could still feel free to do so.
Uh, Alder Cronin?
Um, two comments. One is, Adam, I know you said you have tested the system for having hybrid meetings and that has gone well.
Yes, it, it, it has.
Okay. I- in that case, um, I had said previously that my preference would be either all hybrid or all, uh, in person. Um, I'm fine with resuming in-person meetings, but I am pleased to hear that the hybrid model is an option because I do think that that will continue to make participation possible for people who, um, may be differently abled and not able to attend in person. Um, from a, either from a council standpoint or a community representative standpoint. So I think that's good that we have this technology and God forbid, if this happens again, that we would be prepared to move forward. So.
Uh, Mr. Sayer and then Alder Ryan?
Uh, yeah, and to kind of clarify, you know, if, if we start gravitating towards the, the hybrid process here, we are going to need to establish some rules beyond that. I'm just kind of, and Mr. Klymeyer can jump in here too if I misspeak here, but we'll need to establish some types of, uh, you know, i- if that were to occur, you know, no different than if you allow people to phone in during a meeting, that's kind of the equivalent, I guess. And you can correct me, Brian, if I'm wrong in that statement. But you, you'd have to put some type of policy or guidelines in place of how that would work.
Can I address those questions now? So, yeah, i- if, if, if the council wants to have kind of this hybrid, I, I guess a couple of things. One, and, um, and it can certainly be done, but we, we, we're going to need to change our ordinances to make clear that this is an approach that can be utilized. Um, our ordinances now, I would say certainly anticipate that Alders are actually physically present at meetings during, you know, normal in-person meetings. And so if you want to allow the hybrid approach, we're, we're going to have to make that change. I agree with Adam that we're going to have to come up with some guidelines. The other thing, and, and I can tell you that other municipalities are kind of wrestling with the same issue that you are. One is now that they've seen this June 2nd, or the order that's going into effect in June 2nd in Dane County, I think just about everybody, if not everybody's going back in person. They're contemplating this hybrid approach. Now, one of the things that we need to be probably look into more with the hybrid approach is in March of 2020, when, when all of this started, the Wisconsin Department of Justice, which, um, you know, plays a major role in the open meetings law, they issued two, uh, advisory opinions on essentially how do we have hybrid meetings and still satisfy the open meetings law? And I'm paraphrasing right now when I say this, but essentially they said, look, as long as everybody's making a good faith effort to try to comply with the open meetings law, we're not going to nitpick at, uh, how you handle, uh, the virtual meetings. Once we get back in person so that arguably the hybrid meetings are not required or necessary, I think we're going to have to make sure, we may need to make some changes to the process that we've utilized over the last year. And the example that I can give you is, and, and this is just one example. I mean, if we're sitting in person i- at the city center, we obviously have the ability to control what people say. In other words, people aren't supposed to just blurt out statements. But when they're in person, they can. Um, at a normal meeting, here we've always, and every municipality that I'm aware of has done the same thing as Verona. People are muted, and so they can't do that. And so that is a distinction, uh, between operating in person and operating virtually. It has not been an issue during the pandemic. Now, how exactly the Department of Justice would approach something like that when we're past the pandemic, or at least past the point that, you know, we no longer have any restrictions? Those are the things we're going to have to think about to make sure that our hybrid approach doesn't run afoul of the open meetings law. The other, and, and the most important thing is going to be, to the extent that anybody is participating on a hybrid basis, it effectively has to be as though they're sitting in the audience. So any, any individual who's from the public that's sitting in the audience at the city center has to have the same access to the people that are participating from a hybrid standpoint as, as any older or staff member has.
Okay, um, Alder Ryan and then, uh, myself.
Thanks, Mr. So a couple of things. I agree. I think it's really important to meet back in person. I've heard, um, a number of constituents, particularly older ones, you know, comment that actually doing it via Zoom is, is actually a barrier for them. Uh, just because of the technology barrier. There again, um, as, as Alder Cronin pointed out, I think actually doing, um, Zoom meetings or having a hybrid models actually creates more accessibility for a lot of people as well in terms of getting there in the middle of winter, for example, getting down to council. Um, I think that, you know, in my time, um, on the council, I, I've never actually met in chambers, um, ironically, because I came in during the pandemic and have never, ever been in the chambers. So it's interesting. Um, but I think what, um, COVID has proven is that you can actually accomplish quite a lot. And I think probably, um, the pandemic has changed things, um, hopefully for the better in some ways, uh, you know, irreparably. So um, I'm obviously advocating for a hybrid model. Um, I am one of those Alders who has, um, um, often out of state and I happen to be opposite of Verona when I woke up this morning and I'm now in Savannah, Georgia as I speak. So, um, it would be good to be able to do that. And obviously at the end of the day, if, if that's not possible, then I'll reevaluate. Um, however, that would be my, um, view of things right now. So.
All right, uh, calling on myself. Um, first, I guess I would like to say, you know, for, I'd be, I'd be open to hybrid meetings, even if it required changing our ordinances. I would say no to, to phone only. I think it's, it's, it's a night and day difference with video. Um, I could not imagine running this meeting if everybody was on the phone. Oh, my God. Uh, but video, I feel like, you know, at least my impression is we, we've kept things moving and, and gotten things done and we haven't really had any breakdowns. Um, I would also like to potentially offer, um, the public comment at the beginning of the meeting to continue to offer a virtual option for that as well as Alder Cronin and several others have alluded to, it does allow more accessibility, whether someone's a parent and they can't find a babysitter, whether someone, you know, for whatever reason, can't leave their house because of, you know, potential physical issues. Or I don't know, maybe someone just does not feel like leaving their basement. And I feel like it's a service we can offer to city residents. I would like to limit it if it's, if it's, uh, kind of virtual, I would like to limit it to city resident, city of Verona residents only. Like, I don't think someone in Nebraska or California is going to care what we're doing here. But you never know, and I would like to prevent, you know, uh, uh, a bunch of Alders and all of us from being stuck in a meeting while people from California weigh in on something because they don't live here and it's not really their business. Um, so that, that's, that's kind of what I would like. Um, I spoke with Mr. Klymeyer earlier today and that seems like it's allowable for the beginning part of the meeting, but for the sort of state, uh, the public hearings that are mandated, um, by state, uh, law that we could, uh, not limit it. And so I would want those to be in person only, but that's kind of what I'm thinking right now. But, uh, if Mr. Klymeyer would like to maybe clarify that better than I did.
No, Mayor, I think, I think you stated that accurately. In other words, um, first, for, in, in the easiest example is we're not even required to have public comments on our agenda. And so what the League of Municipalities has opined is that i- if you put it on, is, is, you can have reasonable rules as long as they're reasonable. Um, I think the idea of saying we want to hear more from city residents i- is, is obviously a, a positive thing. Um, when it comes to the statutory requirements, um, y- y- we, we don't have the ability to have, for example, a rule that says we're only going to have city Verona or only we're going to have, we're only going to have Dane County residents. Public hearings by statute are open up to everyone. And so that's the distinction between the statutory public hearings and the public comment agenda item that you have more flexibility on because you in fact don't even have to have it on your agenda if you don't want to.
Thank you. Um, other, uh, questions or comments on in-person or hybrid meetings? Also, I have one thing I, I, I'm very much looking forward to meeting in person again. I feel like, as, as good as this has been, and, and much as we've gotten done, I do feel like the meetings in person are a little bit better. Um, Mr. Sayer, uh, Mr. Klymeyer, did we give staff enough guidance on moving forward?
Oh, well, it sounds to me like you guys want, I mean, i- i- is the June 14th meeting or the June 14th meeting is going to be in person? I, I think I hear you all saying yes, and we'd like to try to have some type of hybrid approach for that meeting if possible. Is that accurate?
That's accurate for me. Uh, Alders? Does that, does that work for all, everyone?
Yes.
So I, I got a question.
Yeah, Alder Touche and then Alder Kemp?
Thank you. Um, so the committee meetings, um, I know the, the, um, chambers have been set up. But historically, the committee meetings have been in, you know, the conference rooms. I don't think they're set up in the same way. Uh, what considerations do we have for that? Because I just think it's going to be challenging if either we're all virtual or we're all in person for those.
Yeah, Mr. Sayer?
I, and that's, that's one of the challenges is that you have to, you'd have to have this in the council chambers because we have to have Andy available to kind of run, run that system and that software. Then it runs into that issue of, you know, if, if you're going to, from, just from a public standpoint, if you're going to have some meetings that are going to be in person with no hybrid option and you have others that are going to be in person with a hybrid option, I mean, it, that's one of the kind of consistencies of the challenge. If, if you kind of start splitting on some of those committee ones, the, the committee ones are going to be tough. Because then, you know, if, i- i- it's the same issue we have right now too on these Zoom accounts is we can't, you can only have one Zoom webinar going at a time as well unless we start buying additional Zoom accounts to kind of make that happen. I mean, that, that it's, it's, it's going to be tough. I think you, you gotta, you know, for the committee ones are going to be really tough just because there's, there's always potential for that overlap. And we're, you potentially are stacking meetings like tonight, we had public, public works at five o'clock. We had public safety at five thirty. We have finance at six thirty. And now we have council at seven and we're kind of stacking a lot of meetings on top of each other. And that's the one thing that we did not explore of how difficult it was going to be a transition between these kind of meetings, getting into one and getting out of one of them. Um, that, that, that probably won't be fun. I'll be honest with you. Probably initially it will not be a lot of fun at all.
Uh, Mr. Klymeyer?
Well, I was just to piggyback off of what Adam said. I, I think what you're going to see, I mean, if I had to bet, um, I think you're going to see municipalities with, you know, whether it's a common council or a village board meeting, for example, those may be hybrid. I would be very surprised for all of the reasons that, uh, Adam just said, if you have committee meetings. Because most, most municipalities are like Verona where you will likely have multiple, you, you may have committee meetings going on at the same time. Most municipalities, if they have one, have, have only one room that essentially allows for the hybrid approach. And then you run into the difficulty, you know, well then which committee is going to be in the hybrid room? And which committee is going to be in the other conference room? So I think what you're probably going to see is municipalities going back and their committee meetings are all just going to be like they were in February of 2020, just in person. And it's that parent body that potentially would have the hybrid, but not the committees.
Uh, Alder Kemp? Oh, sorry. Uh, Alder Touche?
Uh, yeah, I'm just, it was, it seemed, it, there were times it was hard when we're all in person. Meetings run long. Um, I really just want to highly encourage everyone to consider trying to be in the office. I mean, I get it. Health concerns, maybe your shot's not valid just yet. We can give it some time and see how it goes. I'm just, man, I do this stuff at my office all the time and it just, uh, it's either one or the other, but good luck.
Uh, other comments from Alders, uh, on meeting, uh, in person on June 14th with a hybrid option? Uh, Alder Posey?
I'll just share my thoughts. Um, so I would definitely be for meeting in person. Um, I know, and I'll just share my personal, I don't think my shot, my second one will be fully taken, so I'll wear a mask. Um, and that's. And that's what I've been doing, and I'll be doing that. But I feel comfortable being in person and doing that during that time until I'm fully immune at that point, so.
Alder Touche?
You know, I'd be totally open to postponing full in-person meetings to, if we can get the whole council immunized, for sure. I mean, I certainly would like to be flexible and try to just be consistent how we do these things, so. And that's an option for me.
Other thoughts from the council? So what I think tentatively what I'm hearing is, and someone yelled at me if I'm wrong, but June 14 with a sort of preference for in-person, but there's a hybrid option if people want it. Does that, does that sound like acceptable? And then we'll see how it goes from June 14? Seeing nodding heads, Mr. Kleimeyer?
And when you say hybrid option, you're talking about for the council, council meeting? And so the question then is, would you have your committee meetings in person or?
I believe that they would have to be in person. Is my, is my understanding of our technological and sort of facility limitations with the one room being enabled? Mr. Sayer?
I prefer that from a logistics standpoint, if the committees are in person, it's going to be, assuming this works the first time, I mean, it's already going to be a crunch already, so I would prefer that, yeah. It might be possible in the future if we start spreading out committee meetings more. That's probably what's going to have to happen. But yeah, I think it's easier to say committee meetings that night in person. You know, we can plan on a hybrid approach. Brian and I can work on probably bringing some guidance to that meeting, Brian. You can nod your head no if I'm crazy for saying that, but that's the plan. We bring something possibly for adoption or to look at as part of that to kind of address kind of the logistic issue of how it's going to be treated. And I think obviously, whatever we bring for at that point is going to be a moving target, depending if DOJ comes out with something or not in the future, so. But we can, we can do that, I think, right, Brian?
Yeah, and I think what you just said hopefully will happen because I know a number of municipalities are having the same conversation that you all are having tonight. And the guidance from the Department of Justice on the hybrid approach, I mean, I think what we're going to, I think it's going to come, and I think what we're going to hear is members of the public have to have the exact same information available to them as part of that meeting as the alders or the village board members do. And so, and that sounds easy, but that's going to be the rub to make sure that it's the case.
Yeah, and I think as long as we meet that, we should be able to meet any requirements. Naturally, of course, if DOJ comes out with a surprise ruling, we are going to follow it, so that might change our plans. But at the moment, it sounds like we're doing a hybrid meeting on June 14. So I plan on being there physically. I had the shots a while ago, so I should be all good. But yeah, looking forward to seeing some of you in person. Mr. Sayer?
The one thing with that meeting, if you're planning on not being in person, let me know just so we know to kind of, like a head count of who to expect and who not to expect. That would just, that would be beneficial. So just let me know maybe like a week before the meeting, I'd appreciate that.
Excellent. So no further comments, we will move on to item 11D, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the city clerk employment agreement. And there's a second item that we also potentially go into closed session for this one. Do we need to go into closed session on both of these?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Can we do it together or separate?
You can do, you can do it together. Even, we'll have separate motions on them, but you can do them together in the sense of just as we make the motions. I can read the explanation of both of them real briefly. I anticipate action on the city clerk employment agreement. I don't anticipate action, there will be no action on the potential development item.
Great, yeah, so if you could do explanations for two, and then we'll take motions to go into closed session.
So regarding the city clerk agreement, city staff has completed the background checks on a selected individual for the city clerk position. It has no, no issues have been identified. An employment agreement has been prepared, and the candidate has indicated they are comfortable with the terms of the draft agreement. The common council has the ability to go into closed session, discuss the agreement, and may return to open session and take action on the agreement. And the second item regarding the potential development and use of public funds for a development project located in the Verona Technology Park, staff is working on a development project in the Verona Technology Park that requires the Need for Tax Incremental Financing, TIF. Staff is requesting, requesting a closed session discussion with the common council.
Excellent. So I guess I would entertain a motion to go into closed session regarding post-up for the city clerk agreement. Someone wants to make it? Alder Posey?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for a discussion, possible action regarding the city clerk employment agreement. The common council may convene in a closed session for discussion, possible action regarding a city clerk agreement as authorized by Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent C of the Wisconsin statutes to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee subject to the jurisdiction or authority of the city of Verona. The common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
Motion by Alder Posey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky? All right, this is a roll call vote, if the roll could be read.
Alder Person Ryan?
Aye.
Alder Person Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Person Cole?
Aye.
Alder Person Posey?
Aye.
Alder Person Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Person Hoaxed?
Aye.
Alder Person Touche?
Aye.
And Alder Person Kemp?
All right, and with that, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session regarding the potential development in the Verona Technology Park. Alder Posey?
I'd like to make a motion for a discussion and possible action regarding the potential development and use of public funds for a development project to be located in the Verona Technology Park. The common council may convene in a closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E, for the, of the, for the purpose of delivering or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The common council may reconvene in open session and take action on this item.
Motion by Alder Posey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ryan? This is a roll call vote, just like the other one. Mr. Sayer, if you could read the roll?
Alder Person Touche?
Aye.
Alder Person Cole?
Aye.
Alder Person Ryan?
Aye.
Alder Person Posey?
Aye.
Alder Person Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Person Hoaxed? Alder Person Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Person Ricky?
Aye.
All right, we will reconvene in closed session.
So once again, you log out of this meeting and then log into the other invite that I sent you before. So I'm looking more at Phil because he hasn't done this before. Okay, thanks, Phil.
Good? I think we got everybody. All right, with that, we will reconvene in open session at 8:47 PM. We will go to 11D, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the city clerk employment agreement. I am going to, as mayor, recommend to the common council that they hire Holly Lipt as the city clerk. I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation. Mr. Sayer?
And also to approve the employment agreement?
And to, and to improve the employment agreement as well.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp? Motion before the body? I just want to make a quick endorsement on Holly's behalf and to say, I think, you know, she's worked with the city previously, she had great reviews, and she's built up a good record of experience in the city of Stoughton. And from all accounts, her interview and other aspects of the hiring process were great. So I look forward to welcoming her back to the city. But questions or comments on the motion? Do you know further discussion? All those in favor of approving hiring Holly Lipt as the city clerk and approving the city clerk employment agreement signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? Oppose, no? That motion passes. Regarding 11E, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the potential development and use of public funds for a development project, we looked in the Verona Technology Park. The council discussed it in closed session and gave direction to city staff. And when we have more concrete information on the process, it will be released publicly. Any further discussion on this one? Seeing shaking hands, we'll move on to item 12, which is adjournment. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky? All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? And we adjourned at 8:49 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.